And to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the Bryan City Council meeting for Monday, February 2nd, 2015. And we'll start with the approval of the minutes that you have before you there, gentlemen. I did notice one thing, and I have already told Laurie about, that the council president was Keith Day presiding, rather than as it says there, and that's the only correction that I found.
Move that we approve the minutes with that correction.
Mr. Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes. Hearing of public concerns, is there anyone out here that would like to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, hiring of a police dispatcher, Chief Willis.
Evening. I would like to ask council's permission to hire Alexandra Smith as a full-time police fire dispatcher. This full-time position was opened when we, Dustin Gillette resigned to transfer over to the fire department. She was a part of the last civil service exam. She has successfully completed our background process, and if she is hired, then she will go through a three-month training program with the dispatchers.
Mr. Chairman, I move approve.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on agenda, we have a resignation.
Good evening. You guys should have a copy of Chris Cullis's letter that he's resigning from the street department, and his last day will be Tuesday, February 10th.
How long has he worked for us? Quite a while, hasn't he?
Two or three years.
Two or three years?
I think he's going on his third year.
Yeah, I'll make motion with regret.
Second?
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes. Item number six on the agenda is an ordinance. Laurie, would you please number and read? Oh, let's do number five with Tyson first here.
With that, I'd like to post the position of a vehicle operator training at the street department, starting tomorrow.
Make motion to approve.
Second?
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyson. Sorry to have skipped you there. Now to repeat myself, we have an ordinance. Laurie, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number one, 2015, an ordinance providing for the transfer funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending February 28th, 2015. This is a transfer of $500,000 from the 1% income tax fund to the 101 general fund for general spending purposes. Transfer request of $84,681.80 from the 1/2% income tax fund to the 506 wastewater treatment fund for payment on the wastewater sanitary sewer overflow elimination project loan. Total amount of transfer requested, $584,681.80.
Move we suspend?
I'll second.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Move that we accept?
Second?
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Number seven, we have an ordinance, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number two, 2015, an ordinance establishing the pay rate scale for seasonal workers in the Parks and Recreation Department of the city of Bryan, making it effective February 2nd, 2015, and rescinding ordinance number two, 2014.
Yeah, this is an ordinance we do every single year that sets the pay range for our seasonal part-time employees. The changes to it have occurred because of the minimum wage being raised.
Ben, I just have a question. Why do we do this, I guess I'm thinking so early? I mean, is it just to let the past workers know?
Yeah, so I have some idea when I start reaching out to my college students as to what they'll be making, so they have some idea if there's something greener out there that they want to go for, or if they're okay with what we're going to be paying.
And again, normally, when does it, when do they normally start? I mean, you're probably gonna start, I mean, some of your people probably start in March, though, don't they?
Yeah, my, our mowers?
Yeah.
Will start the first Tuesday of April.
Okay.
But we'll get ready, like, our letters went out in the mail last week, so I'll start hearing from all of our returning staff as to whether they're coming back or not. Typically, the college kids are the one that have an interest in, what am I gonna be making this summer, that kind of thing. So we try to get it set as early as we can, so I have some idea to let them know where they fall into the pay scale.
And do you have a deadline on that, where is that they must respond?
For them to get back to me?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's usually about the middle of March. I usually give them, as you know, college spring breaks usually a couple weeks earlier than the high school spring breaks. I usually give them till the end of spring break to reply and say, yes, I want to work, no, I don't want to work. And for us, and it says in their letter that they get, if we don't hear from you by a certain date, you do not have a position.
Okay.
So we put the onus back on them to communicate with us, whether it be by email, phone call, return letter, however they choose to let us know whether they're coming back or not. And if not, then we gotta fill it.
What do you have, I think, what, maybe four mowers? Four guys mowing?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then?
Yeah, but I have three that run the, you know, the finish route, it's kind of what we call it, because it's, we run them with the 997s, and then we have one big pull behind mower that we do the longer areas.
How many, then, after that, your seasonal college kids, high school kids, your lifeguards and things like that?
Right.
What are you up to, 30, 35?
Yeah, that's a good ballpark, because we're typically, we have a couple that work with court that help in and out of the flower beds. I typically have four that do the trash, the mow rounds, the ball diamonds, those kinds of things. And then when you jump over to the pool, you know, you're looking at anywhere from 20 to 25, depending on how many we can get. And of those, usually 15 of them are a consistent basis, and then we try to build a sub-list of five to 10 people if we can do it. Usually lifeguards are the hardest for us to find.
Okay, good, thank you. Do you have to provide for the training of lifeguards when the need is there?
What we do is we offer a program that we reimburse them, if they're a new lifeguard, we reimburse them for their certification, which means they go out and they pay for the certification. And if they work for us for four summers in a row, they essentially will make that money back. We give them a $50 reimbursement at the end of each of their first four summers that helps defray the cost of becoming a certified lifeguard. So essentially, when they leave, if they were to leave after four years, their certification was free.
Is, do they have to be recertified each year? Do they take a refresher or anything?
Don't quote me, but I believe their certification is good for three years.
I move we suspend.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, who was second? Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Move that we accept?
Second?
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes. Thanks, guys.
Next on the agenda is a building permit. Andy?
Tonight, I have a permit for Key Mansfield. This is at 403 North Main Street, it's the corner of Trevitt and North Main, the old Beagles Transmission. Stephen Hour construction will be doing the work. What they're doing is replacing the roof on that building. Cost for the project is $25,000. State construction type is 5B, use group is S1.
Any questions, gentlemen? I make a motion we approve the permit.
Second, Dan.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Thank you, Andrew. Item number nine is our annual report. We have three of them scheduled for tonight, and our first one would be the Parks and Rec. Ben?
Dominic?
Okay, our 2014 annual report, all of you should have a copy of it in front of you. Included in that copy will be the Tree City information that I always try to give to you guys. I've just kind of taken a snippet from the packet you have in front of you to discuss here this evening. If you have any questions or concerns, as you go through the report, please don't hesitate to call me, I'd be glad to answer anything I can. The one thing before we start getting into numbers, I would remind you, is a lot of our numbers are best guesses. We try to be as accurate as we can, but sometimes with the activities that are going on, we just try to do kind of an estimate to give us a number for reporting purposes. First of all, you'll see my staff, very grateful for the staff that I have, tremendous workers. It was a busy year for us, obviously, as it was for everybody else, but without these people, it would be hard to do the job that I do. So I personally want to thank them for their hard work throughout the 2014, and obviously the start of the 2015 year. Underneath of me, I have a park board. As you can see, my representatives for the 2014 year were Dave Batt, Kevin Rao, Tammy Roger, Emily Eball, and Rene Isaac. And then I also have Paula Klein as an ad hoc member. You should know that Renee came off of the park board in 2014. 2014 was her last year of her term. Paula actually filled that position, and Renee will stick with us in an ad hoc basis as she has for many years. So we're excited to keep Renee with us and Paula coming back on with us. So the other board I have underneath of me is my tree commission, Phil Fix, Charlie Wolf, Paula Klein, Belinda Lemmons, when she's not in Florida, Helene Moog, and Court Gosha represents my department. The tree commission obviously takes care of Arbor Day, and then spends quite a bit of time with the trees. Our last big issue, obviously, was the downtown trees, that kind of stuff, so they try to stay active. I will also tell you that last week, we sent three of our tree commission members over to the freshman year of the Tree Academy Commission that's being put on by the urban forester, Stephanie Miller. So we're excited that some of them want to go and get some additional training, and it's a really good program, so we are excited that some of them have decided to push forward with that. The first graph you'll come to, and your charts there, you guys will have some other things before you get to it. We estimate that we had 154,825 people use the parks in some aspect or variety. Again, I'll remind you, that's a best guess. We do our best to be as accurate as possible, but sometimes that isn't possible. So it's a pretty good year. Obviously, as you can see, I break it down by some of the different facilities that we have, our community center, our East End, our Lincoln School, middle school, other activities, shelters, pools, and McDonald's rough. So it gives you some idea of how much each facility's being used throughout the course of a year.
You know, one thing, you probably don't have it in here or figured in, is the number of walkers out in the rec park and like that. There's a lot of people use that daily. You'll go by and you'll see them out there at every area.
Well, and again, that's why I try to emphasize that the numbers you see in front of you is really a best guess on our part. Like you said, we could never, we could never probably put a very close estimate on the number of walkers. You know, this time of year, that number's down, but you start getting into spring and summer, you go out there for a baseball game, and, I mean, there's people everywhere out there walking. So that would be really hard for us to kind of narrow down, you know? So this number, you know, could be a little low, it could be a little high in some areas, but we think it gives us an accurate perception as to what's being done in the parks and how many people are using them. Graph number two, you'll find there, I do the five-year outline, so you can kind of see where our usage is going. You may look at this past 2014 and say, wow, what a jump. A couple things really tie into that jump. We brought Day in the Park back to the park. That is an extremely large number that hasn't been there for the four years previous to that. We hosted a tenant under Little League State Championships. So we had nine teams from out of town coming to Bryan and spending a week in Garver Park. We hosted the swim and dive meet again this year. So those are very large numbers, for those of you that are not familiar with the swim and dive meet. But when the swim and dive meet come, there are a ton of people that are in Moore Pool Saturday and Sunday. And then the other thing that's new, that kind of reflects this number a little bit, we hosted the summer, free summer lunch program. And this is the second year for us to host the free summer lunch program. Year number one, they had about seven, eight kids a day. Year number two, we moved the park, and we had about 35-plus a day. Some days, there were 60, 70 kids down there for the free lunch program. It's a five-day-a-week program throughout the entire summer. So over the course of a summer, you're looking at a change of 4,000 to 5,000 people that we counted. So those are four big events that we've hosted this past year that would show the reason for such a spike in participation. The next one I have in front of you would be our shelters and pavilion usage. Again, I break them down by shelter or pavilion, however you look at it. Our two most popular ones, obviously, are JC Pavilion and our Moore Shelter House. Excuse me, pavilions one, two, and three are also right there with Moore and the JC Pavilion. So it gives you some idea of the usage and how spread out the usage is. It also, you know, we use it for reunions, birthday parties, special groups, community events. You know, that list could go on and on. Everybody has their own reason of why they use the pavilions, but anything we use the pavilions for, we try to get a head count on to reflect in this number. The next chart you'll find, again, is our five-year picture of what's happening with the shelters and pavilions and the usage of them. You can see, again, another spike, another increase. Again, same thing, you know, three big events that made a huge impact. The lunch program takes place at Matty Marsh, so it's reflective of Matty Marsh Pavilion. When the Little League State Tournament was in town, they used Garver Pavilion as their team meeting spots. Anytime they had coaches' meetings or anything like that going on, most of them took place over at the pavilion. We also had a couple teams use the pavilion for team dinners, things like that, to do in between game times. And then, obviously, the conference swim meet with the three pavilions that are located out in Moore Woods, they see quite a bit of use throughout that weekend. So those are kind of the reason for the spike. The last chart I have there in front of you is an overall view of the pools. This past season, we did 25,945 people, pass sales, public swim, lessons, rentals, swim team, practice meets. We just try to give you the best picture we can as to how many people use the pool in the summer. As you can see, and probably no surprise to anybody here, but Moore Pool is our largest with 84% of the usage coming from Moore Pool. Last chart you have in your annual report there for me is, obviously, the five-year look. You'll see that in 2010 and 2014, the numbers are very similar. I think 2010 was the last time we hosted the annual meet, so you can kind of see, when we have that annual meet, we sit right around 25,000 people in the pool. When we don't have the meet, it drops down to 20, 21, 22, somewhere in there. So it gives you a good idea of what it looks like when we host that event, both the swim and dive, and then also when we don't host the swim and dive. But that's what I have. Obviously, as I told you in front of you, you have a more extensive overview of our annual report. Again, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time, or as you start going through them, if you have questions, please feel free to call me, and I'll answer, try to answer anything that I can.
Moore Park versus East End, one of the biggest part of that numbers is because that's where most events are held too, right?
Yeah, well, I mean, when you look at a whole, I mean, when you start talking about all the baseball, softball, all the events that go on in the evening, that helps with their, it's also in a more populated area.
And the same with Moore Pool versus East End?
Absolutely.
Most events are.
Mm-hmm.
The reason I'm saying is because I don't want anybody to get the indication that we don't use the East End a lot. It's actually, that 16% is a pretty heavy number.
Yeah.
When you consider the fact that's the casual site.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and that, I mean, that go, that's not just pool, I mean, that's the facility as a whole. I mean, the pool, the shelter, when you kind of break it out, I mean, East End gets its fair share, and actually, the summer lunch program, that's where we tried to run it the first year, was East End. We were just concerned, when you start talking about kids seven to 14 years old, with the main road running there, we think that was a big factor in not being able to get the kids to the park for the program. Because as soon as we moved it to Matty Marsh and got off the highway, I mean, the program just boomed. And we expect it probably to do the same, if not better, this year.
Has there been any discussion about maybe another, any type of tournaments coming in, or anything like that, state national tournament?
Yes, yeah.
Mainly baseball.
Yeah, we are hosting the 2015 Junior Acme State Championships. We are also going to host the 2015 13 and under Little League Intermediate State Championships on Field Four. And we have also been granted the 2016 12 and under state champion, Little League State Championships at Garver Park, and the winner then moves on to the Indianapolis Regional, which is one step away from Williams Park.
So we do have a couple activities this summer that could...
Yeah, and we're, you know, we're right on the edge as, we're not having Acme this year, we have Junior Acme this year. I would look for us to have maybe Acme next summer, or the following summer, probably 16 or 17 Acme will come back, they kind of rotate it around a little bit.
Well, in regards to that Little League tournament this past year, the other flipside to this was, is that it helped us out in recreation and things like that. But a lot of these teams, Town Beach, Canton, I think, Kenton, I believe, and, but anyhow, it was nine teams, and I would say that probably out of those nine teams, probably seven to eight of them stayed here the whole week.
Yeah.
So there was like 15 kids per team, and coaches, and parents, grandparents, things like that. So I guess, being, I was down there a couple days, I was very impressed with that, and I think it stimulated the economy here. I mean, it helped, I mean, they used every, they used every, I think, room at the Plaza, every room over here, the, come on, right here in their...
Colonial?
Colonial. And then they was even also staying out at Holiday Inn.
Yeah, for the local merchants, we kind of, we kind of got lucky, all of them were here on Saturday when the rains came. So they were all kind of scrambling to find places to eat until everything was decided how we were gonna attack the rain delays.
Yeah.
And I know one of the local restaurants had two teams of about 25 kids and parents, and they kind of split them up and put one team on one side, and one team on the other side, and for about a three-hour period, you couldn't really get in. I mean, it was packed.
Yeah.
So I know they, some of them stayed local and ate local, and, you know, I do think it's a good opportunity for us to show Bryan and kind of show what we have, and we've heard nothing but great comments coming out of the nine teams that were here to play, so... That's encouraging.
It was all positive. Yep. Thank you.
Ben, looking at your five-year history, I noticed 2013 was down pretty much across the board. Is that weather factors, or what do you see?
Across the board, 2013, off the top of my head, we had a mild winter, or a mild summer. The pool numbers were down, all of our pavilions, shelters, rentals, that kind of thing were down. A lot of the pool numbers and shelters and that kind of stuff, you'll see, have a correlation with our summer temperatures. Not always, but we've also seen a spike since about 2008, you know, when the economy kind of got rough, we saw a lot of people staying more local. Before that, we used to see a lot of people go to the lake, go to, you know, Bryan kind of left on the weekends. But we do see a kind of a pattern of people sticking around and trying to find more local things to do, as opposed to leaving to do those kinds of things.
Thanks.
That would be kind of interesting this summer with gas prices down, should they stay down.
Yeah. Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
May I ask you one question?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
The tree situation and your, the ones that are diseased, are we making good progress on that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Over the last couple years, we've, we've taken close to 400 of them out. There probably are some still isolated terrorist trees, but, you know, it's finding time to get to them, and Tyson's guys help us with that, and as you know, the last couple winters, they've been busy doing other things. So, you know, it's just one of those things, is as we have time, we get to them. Now, if it becomes a dead tree and it's an emergency, then I contract it, and we get it taken care of if it's not something we can get to right away. So, yes, I feel like we have a pretty good grip on the ash board.
And we're encouraging memorials too, aren't we?
Oh, absolutely.
Tree by...
Yeah, yeah, we, you know, I would guess, we do probably 20 to 30 memorial trees a year.
Wonderful.
So if anybody's interested in that, just give us a call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our list is Bryan for to make a report on the engineering department.
Okay, this report does not follow along in the annual report that you have there, I just kind of picked a few things out, kind of truncated a little bit, because I can speak for Tyson and I, we've been up 18 hours or so, and plowed snow for two days, and a couple hours sleep, so I'll be brief tonight. But starting out, the first couple pictures there, those are from South Main Street. The first one looks fuzzy, well, it's foggy, so contractors there, kind of like the postmen, they work rain, sleet, snow, doesn't really matter. So just a few good pictures. There's, there's my team. Of course, I'm your city engineer, Melanie takes care of basically all the day-to-day items, Andy is the zoning administrator, Dawn takes care of the GIS and mapping, Patrick does my surveying and a lot of the construction inspection, Scott does some construction inspection as well, and does a lot of the traffic lights, and of course Frank, same thing, he's irreplaceable right now. We're, he's down with... We're, he's down with, had a little surgery on his knee, and he's down for a few months, but he'll be back. So we're looking forward to that. Just a quick little recap on some of the projects we did last year. The 2014 High Street paving, that was bid in March. Gurken paving was the contractor on that. And the final cost was just under $1.2 million. And if you recall, we had 80% of that was actually covered by a federal grant. So that was, we were extremely happy to have that. And I think you all agree, High Street really looks good now. Huge improvement to that section. The asphalt program was the rest of the paving that we did, that was bid in September. We kind of waited till the end of the year to see how much money we had left from the other projects to be able to utilize. Contractor again was Gurken paving. You're going to hear that name quite a little bit here in the, in the scheme of things. They'd done most of our projects that dealt with major asphalt. The final cost was around $221,000, and we had paid portions of Central, South Portland, South Street, and East Wilson as well, as you recall. And there's just two quick pictures from paving project, doing a little raking and then adjusting a manhole up. The South Main widening project that we did last year, that was bid in April as well. Gurken paving again. The bid cost was $883,000, and the final cost was $871,000. And I want to note that that was a deduct, it was less than what the original bid amount was. And as you recall, I stood up here several times with my tail between my legs, saying, we got these adds, we got these extras, we got these extras, we're finding a lot of unknown things. But said, I feel confident when it's all said and done, that we'll still come in under budget. And we did come in under the original bid amount. So we were extremely pleased with that. A couple of quick pictures down there during construction and final, and I think you can all say, it really, really helps getting into the cemetery and down by Arby's and whatnot. And of course, the turn lane down by the traffic light at Fountain Grove. I think it really, really improved safety down there. And that was one of the key factors of the grant was safety. That, we received $376,000 of federal funding on that project. Toy Street water line replacement, that was actually a late 2013 project, but we did not wrap it up until 2014. Gleason Construction was the bidder on that. That was a joint project between the Bryan Municipal Utilities and our office. They had replaced the water line, and we had repaved the street and done a few other curb replacements and whatnot in there. That was a 50-50 Ohio Public Works grant, which we've been very fortunate in getting quite a few of those over the past few years. The pavement marking program, that was bid in August as well. Final cost was around $58,000. We had a picture that we took here of the, of the paint machine, and just if you ever wondered what goes on, there's a little blow up there. The paint gun is in front, spits the paint down. And if you're not doing the thermoplastic, like what's on High Street, it just goes right to the back and shoots glass beads on top. And the glass beads is what actually makes it reflective. And, you know, you see the glass in there. But the middle gun there is for the 3M element that is the thermoplastic that goes down, and it's just another layer, kind of like a, it's not really a two-part epoxy, but that's kind of along the same line. It puts two different materials down, makes it a little thicker, lasts a little longer. Should get a five to seven-year life out of that, rather than, what, that water-based paint, two weeks?
Too bad they can't afford to do that all over town.
Well, you can't do it on old pavement. Once the pavement is old, it's, the pores fill up with material, and you can't get it to stick. You have to use it on brand-new pavement. So we're trying to get in the habit now of when we do brand-new pavement on large stretches, I don't want to just do it for a block, but if we've got, you know, three or four blocks of it, we'll go ahead and switch it over to the thermoplastic, because, you know, it's, it's about twice the cost, but if it lasts five to seven years instead of two years, it's definitely worth the money, so.
Now, does it fade over time?
Oh, yeah, 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 it'll fade.
Does that make it fade?
We've still got some thermoplastic, original thermoplastic, down on South Main, I'd say in front of Debbie's Dairy Freeze and down in that area. There's a few areas where there might be some, where the center turn lane widens out, and there's some angular striping in there. We don't replace those. So there is still some thermoplastic out there that has been there for 20 years. It's, it's not reflective anymore, but the material's still there. So, and then that's the key, it's the reflectivity, that we got to touch it up with more glass beads to keep the reflectiveness up. North Island Street improvements. We bid that in December. We have not started that yet, but we've got the contract documents all done, and I anticipate once we lose this next frost in the ground, we'll be starting that. $589,000 bid, $300,000 was a grant from the revolving loan fund. That'll have new curbing, sidewalks, stormtaps, water line, and pavement. And that'll be, again, a full-depth removal. We're tearing everything out and starting over. We're going to lower the road in there half a foot to a foot, and get the water down in the road and get it out of there the way it's supposed to be. So I think that'll really make a nice addition to those two blocks there. We anticipate completion before school starts, give or take a little bit. So that's typically our goal with all of our street projects. As we talked, retro reflectivity mandates, it's ongoing with the street department. We spend over $20,000 a year replacing signs. We're finally through all the stop signs. We finished those up last year, and now we're working on some of the other directional and smaller signs as well. But you can see signs, they get kind of crazy on the left and right side there. You know, it sometimes can be confusing, you know, the left one, stop, don't go left, right, forward, backwards. We wish we could put those up on some of our construction sites, just stop, be safe. So got to have a little humor there once in a while. Some other projects, we, we didn't necessarily fund, but we assisted with. We helped the Parks and Rec bid their Rec Park Field Five project. Municipal Court, they had over $100,000 bid for some workstations, computer terminals and whatnot down there. So our office prepared the bid documents and took care of the prevailing wages on that for them. We also helped out the wastewater. They had two projects that we helped bid, one late in 2013, which we finished last year, and then one that was bid in September, the digester cleaning project, which if you remember, we actually didn't get that one done. Got weathered out, they started working, and the, we had it really cold end of November, and they just couldn't quite get it done. So we anticipate wrapping that up here, probably after wheat harvest, I think, is what they're planning on finishing that. Other tasks our offices, this is just a, just a little drop in the bucket. We take care of traffic control devices. We assist Bryan Municipal Utilities with bidding and design of some of their projects, specifically the water. We don't do that much with the electric or the cable as far as project, but, you know, we actually loaned out our bucket truck to the electric department here for the last month. One of theirs was down, so we were nice and played good with them, and shared a little equipment to help out, so it worked good. You know, again, we helped wastewater and Parks and Rec bid their capital projects, assist the street department as needed. The zoning and building department's in-house, and Scott and I, we plow snow, like we said, to help Tyson out as needed. Goals for 2015, we're going to apply for further grant funds, just try and, try and stretch our 0.0% income tax. Specifically, we're going to reapply again for North and South Main Street paving project. We're hoping that we can be, we're hoping we can get that. That'll be probably an 80/20 if we get it. The Fountain Grove Drive project, we're working with the state on that as well, as far as applying for the grant funds. That'll be, if we get the grant, it'll be a full-depth removal on Fountain Grove Drive west of South Main Street. We'll have three lanes in there, basically look like Town Line Road, where you've got the two lanes and the center turn lane there. And that'll kind of really tie in good with the schools' project, if we can get the 90-10 funds on that. And of course, Ohio Public Works, we apply for those every, every September as well for water and sewer improvements. And we've talked with Nate from BMU, he's got a couple of plans already that we're going to consider applying for, so we're ready to go with that. Continue with the C-MON process with the street and wastewater departments, and continue with our commercial industrial clean water investigations. We've been trying to tackle a couple of big plants every year. We had worked with Ohio Art this year. Found some clean water that was actually getting into the sanitary and worked with them on getting that removed. So we've got a couple other facilities that we're working with, trying to, trying to tackle that and forge ahead. And in closing, I usually try and have some, some form of a little funny picture, and you've seen the, the signs that, we have an arrowboard that directs traffic one lane or the other. They also have them out there that you can type in messages. It's like, you know, turn left ahead or bear left. I think ODOT was experimenting with one that reads people's minds, and typically what you think the people are thinking is, you'll never get to work on time, ha-ha. So just thought that was kind of a cute little thing, and I'm sure that's what everybody thinks when they come up to a construction zone, like, really, I'm never going to get to work on time. So just thought that was kind of cute. So, any questions?
Yes, on the Fountain Grove Drive, in your planning on that, is the township involved with that?
They're not involved in the grant process. They are willing to participate in some of the paving, because they would have to repave it anyways. So there will be some involvement with them financially, but it would just be with the surface asphalt on their half of the road.
If we were to get that grant, when, when you see that project take place?
We're hoping 2016, but it depends on the funding, the funding structure of ODOT. If there's not a lot of applicants, it'll be 2016, but it could roll into 17, which if it does, the school's already prepared to work with some of the center turn lane and a little strip there. So we're, we're kind of in a holding pattern until we get, you know, acknowledgement on what we can or can't do. If we don't get the grant, that's, it's not okay, because I'd like to have the money. But it is okay, we can still forge ahead with the improvements, some of the improvements that we're planning out there in the area to tie in with the school project. So it, it's needed, the grant funds are, but if we don't get them this year, we can do what we need and try and apply next year, and just keep forging ahead, and do it over the summer when the school's not in session, so.
And when does the school open? When are they planning to open?
They're telling us fall of 2016.
Fall of 2016?
Right.
You know, I think it's important right now, you know, so many times we wait till tax levies come up for a vote, and then we try to do the sales pitch. But when we start talking about these 80% grants, the 20% that allows us to get those grants come from that 0.5%.
Sure.
And one of the reasons, and I'm going to say this, and if it's wrong, correct me, okay, but it's my understanding that so many communities cannot do this, because they don't have the upfront money.
Right.
And if we did not have that 0.5%, you would not see Main Street and High Street the way it is today.
Well, with the small cities grants that we apply for, that's generally the...
That's a little bit different.
Well, but we are the only municipality in Williams County that's allowed to apply for that. You know, the only one. But, yeah, correct, you compare some other smaller towns, they don't have the matching funds.
Right.
You know, it's just a struggle. And if we didn't have the 0.5%, we'd be in the same boat, so.
You don't even want to do that Fountain Grove until 16 anyhow, do you?
No, no.
Because of the construction of...
Sure, yep.
Moving in and out of it, it's going to break.
Yep.
So that is my concern, or my same question is, was that we're hoping to get it in, if you get it, would you get it approved this year?
We'll know.
And then you can carry the money over, or, yeah?
In a perfect world, well, we will know in June or July this year whether or not we get the money.
Okay.
If we get the money, we'll request for qualifications process to do the design, because you'll have to be an ODOT pre-qualified designer. Start that process, and in a perfect world, as long as the funding ties in, right, as long as they have the funding available, we'll be ready to bid March of 16.
Okay.
So it'll be a nine-month design on that, six to nine-month design process and ready to roll, if the state has the funding dollars there. If they throw us in the 16, if they throw us in the following year's budget, then we'll have to regroup and work out with the school how we're going to handle it.
Gotcha.
But, you know, we had anticipated a two-and-a-half-year building process with the school, and they're saying it's going to be a year and a half. So, you know, we'll see how it all works out.
Okay.
Either way, we'll get through it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, wait a minute. Judy would like to ask a question.
Will they be putting sidewalks on that Fountain City?
We're still in conversations with the school on that. Some of that is not, most of it's not in the city limits on the south side of the road, so we don't have regulations to dictate what we can and can't do in the township side. It would be at their discretion, but the school, with their, their transportation needs, as far as where the people are going to walk from, they're, we're still in negotiations or discussions on if that is a good thing to put a sidewalk down there. The, the core amount of people are going to come down Center Street and from the residential district, that right now, in my opinion, the need isn't real big to have a sidewalk down there, because all the kids are going to have to walk a half-mile south to walk over the building, to walk a quarter-mile north to get back into it. So that's still in the thinking phase. We haven't made a decision one way or the other on whether or not it will be included.
Speaking of that, the sidewalks proposal, or people are questioning it, from Greenfield over to the north side of the new building?
Well, that's not in the schools...
That's not...
Not in the schools' plan to have a sidewalk there.
It's not in schools' plans, and the city's not doing anything with that at this time.
I can't put a sidewalk that dumps into grass. If the school doesn't have a sidewalk in their plan, and I don't think they want the pedestrians funneling in from that way. They've got their design on where they want the pedestrians and where they want the vehicles coming in from. So I can't just arbitrarily dump them a sidewalk from somewhere else, so.
Okay, I think that's a good explanation, because there are a lot of people questioning that.
Right, yeah. They're looking at where the bulk of the people are going to come from. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, our zoning commission report. Andy?
I'd like to give you a brief overview of permits and certificates issued in 2014. I should all have a copy of this paperwork in front of you. What did I hit? Okay, in 2014, I issued 124 permits. As you can see, number of permits has steadily decreased over the last several years. I do not have an answer for this, why it keeps coming down. People just ain't doing stuff.
I think it's still a money problem.
So, yeah, ever since, as you can see there, 2008, it's, it's not been good. Out of those permits, permit revenue was just under $15,000, which is up from previous years. Reason for that is, a lot of those were, there were seven new houses built in Bryan last year, which is good, looking at previous years, which we'll get to that slide here in a minute. Overall, construction money spent, commercial was just under $2 million, and residential reported construction cost was $1.8 million. As you can see, commercial was down. We really only had one new business, that was Fastenal. Well, we had two new commercial businesses, Fastenal, and then Jack Knighart built a storage unit there on Trevitt Street. So wasn't really a lot of commercial money spent. You see the residential's up, again, that goes back to the seven new houses that were built last year. Here's an overview of the last six years of residential construction type. As you can see, the single-family houses were up compared to the previous years. Did not issue any duplexes or triplexes last year. Zoning certificates, only issued nine in 2014, which was the same as the previous year. The revenue for those was just under $1,900. We did have a final plat approval for Autumn Chase Phase Three. We did three lot splits. We granted two variances, one, both for lot sizes. One was for Gary Welling out in Greenfield, and the other was for Terry Cole Burger Dairy. We granted one conditional use, that was for additional outdoor storage at the new Tractor Supply store going in in the old Kmart. And we issued, we did a site development review for Fastenal out in the industrial park, and we rezoned two parcels on South Main Street, down by the corner of South Street, to match their current use. And that is all I have, gentlemen. You got any questions?
I do, I do want to make a comment on that permit thing where you showed the, well, I think, I think Dick Reed said it right the last time. Even though you're listening on the media about the fact that we're in a more positive, more confident economic setting, it's still not strong like it was in the 1990s or anything. We're not anywhere near it.
Oh, no.
And we're still feeling the pressure of that. We had a, we've been having a negative revenue setting from prior years.
a, a negative, uh, revenue setting, uh, from prior years, we're still feeling the pressure of that, and, uh, you can see it in the housing thing. And, uh, so, when somebody comes back to me and tells me, well, the unemployment's great and confidence is up, um, my comment to that is, yeah, unemployment numbers are really great if you don't count the fact they're not including a lot of numbers in there, people not working at all, because they've lost their benefits or whatever, and yet, the economy is better, and, and I don't think there's a question, we see traffic and we see revenue stores up, but we don't see, uh, the fact that there's still businesses that close their doors and still businesses that are move out of town and out of country. And, uh, thirdly, uh, yeah, things are up, and I'm glad to see seven houses built, but let's remember the years we used to have 15 and 20.
Oh, yeah, when I first started in the early 2000s, well, that's when, you know, Greystone and Greenfield and Autumn Chase, yeah, those 15 new houses a year are easy.
Uh, that, that's one of the reasons, I have to say, I'm very impressed with the community and the citizens in this community, because we have ventured forward when, uh, when we're back, still having some struggles, and yet, we're building the schools and built the, the Don North Building and, and got the new industrial park, we're doing things on a positive thing, so do two things, one is to help promote that.
The fire station.
Yeah, and the fire station, one is to, um, help with the health, safety, welfare issues, ISO, if we want to talk about the fire department and police situation, and, and the fact just to make it a clean community, and people have been very, very dedicated and very, very, um, good about voting for the taxes to keep us to do that, so, we're lucky, but things are not as good as what the media says, and it's that way nationwide.
You know, and we, kind of going along with that is, a lot of the jobs that have come along are not, they're lower-middle income or, or below that, that have been shown that we don't, that we did have, we did have that back in the 90s where we don't have that today, they're a lot lower, lower-income jobs.
I, I go to these meetings where we have analysts and economists, and I says, so, um, Andy's back to work and he's making 80,000 dollars a year, I think that's really great, except last year he was making 150,000 dollars a year and still has the debt that goes along with that, and a lot of our economic numbers are not inclusive of that.
Let's get it clear, let's get it clear, Andy doesn't make the 1,000.
I was going to ask Laurie, did I get a raise?
Yo, but he smiled, let's go get that out in the public.
He did smile. Woo! It was an I-feel-good moment, Andy.
It was.
Andy, I, I have a question, uh, not quite as involved as this, who should apply for permits?
Either the homeowner can or the contractor.
For, for what purpose?
Um...
What, what, what criteria should a person come see you for a permit?
Well, general rule of thumb is if you're picking up a hammer, you should call and see if you need one.
Now, uh, once they have a construction project going, is there any inspection that takes place, maybe I'm asking the wrong person here?
No, no, we do not have certified residential building department.
Okay.
So, basically, I ensure that they're meeting the zoning code, even though we call it a building permit, it's more for zoning purposes.
Okay.
And the auditor also wants to know what's going on, that's where, like, the windows and the siding, that's where those came from, several years ago, we added those items, because they want to know so they can go out and inspect.
Okay.
I've heard that discussion that, uh, about, uh, not, uh, electrical and plumbing, uh, inspections, they, they just don't happen, huh?
No. Outside the house, yes, so we can update our tap cards, but anything inside, no, don't look at.
So, that's why we get some bad stuff sometimes.
Unfortunately, yes.
Fire department can't come in there, they need to check the electrical, a lot of tech, okay, I think.
Is there anything else, guys?
Anybody else have a question for Andy? If not, we thank you very much, Andy.
Thanks a lot, Andy.
Thank you.
That concludes our, uh, annual report for tonight, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, at this time on our agenda, we have an executive session for the acquisition of property, so after a brief recess, we will go into that. Thank you.
Andy, roundtable.
Oh, oh, by the way, before we leave, Judy, do you have anything you'd like to say? Chief Siders?
No, sir.
Chief Willis?
No, sir.
Tyson?
No, sir.
Brian?
Right, you go first.
Mrs. Brian? Ben? Do you have anything you want to say? All right, Andy, you won, great.
Uh, just want to say, since the city offices were closed today, we did not have our planning commission meeting for the new school site, um, that has been rescheduled for March 2nd, and notices will be sent out again here in a couple of weeks to all the homeowners and whatnot, so.
Is that going to be an issue, I mean, is that going to be all right, or is...
Uh, no, it's, it's fine, I, uh, talked with the school and architect, everybody's this morning, and so they said delicious, they're in Elbury, we had plenty of time here, so they said March 2nd would probably work better.
Just wondering if it was concerned that that date would be too far away?
No.
Okay.
So...
Okay, thank you, Andy. Does the media have anything they want to say? All right. Would you, would you like to say?
Nothing.
I'm good, I'm good.
Rick?
Um, I just wanted to say, in, in listening to the reports tonight and everything, um, you know, we got to be, we, we should be very proud of, uh, the job that our department heads are doing, you know, we've got fabulous streets, we've got great parks, we, you know, and, and the job that Tyson and his crew did, uh, last night to, to keep our streets clear, um, we should be very proud of what, what, uh, our city is able to do.
Lot of effort there.
Lot of effort.
Okay.
No comment, I agree, you guys did an excellent job.
Wonderful.
Good reports, too.
Okay, Laurie, do you have anything you want to add?
No, sir.
Okay, Miranda?
No, sir.
Okay, Mayor?
Yeah, just a couple things, uh, you, uh, mentioned, I think Dick mentioned the ISO, uh, report, Bruce Siders gave a little handout on the, uh, ISO and how important it is to keep our great rating for ISO for economic purposes as well as, uh, low insurance and so forth, and, uh, they're changing rules and regulations, and, uh, it's, uh, we have a high, are we class, class three, and, uh, that's a very good, that keeps our insurance rates and everything down, and that's, uh, you want to read that article and what's coming up, so, that was just a handout there, and then, uh, for Mr. Hoopie and those that teach at the vocational school, this is, uh, career and technical education month for County, uh, February 1st to, uh, 28, and I have a proclamation, as I see other mayors have been sent, uh, to take out there, and, uh, what happens on February 6th, which is Friday, is we go out there at noon, uh, to their, uh, four-star cafe and get to have lunch with, uh, the Bryan students, and then they take us a little tour of the building, and I'm always quite impressed, uh, I, I was there when Four County started, but I'm still so impressed of the cleanliness and the, the, and the kids are so proud when you go out there to, to show you, so, a lot of the mayors will be, and county commissioners will be going out there on that day, so, this is, uh, career and technical ed month, ed month for County, February 1st to 28, so.
And our chef training students will do a great job taking care of you, too.
Okay, good, good, and I believe, and, uh, I might say, uh, the department heads did a nice job tonight on their reports, and we'll have some the next time, we also had a, uh, meeting, we're working on the, updating the handbook, which we haven't done for a while, we've done some preliminary work with the department heads, and we hope to bring that forward in the next meeting or two to get that adopted, so, things are moving forward, so, that's, that's all that I have.
Okay, thank you.